Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of February 26, 2020. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. This is the second meeting of the month. Typically, we spend a fair amount of the meeting talking about our various committee and department reports. We take care of some administrative business. This evening, we also have a very timely presentation regarding the 2020 census for you. So tonight, I'm not going to show you on the big screen because technology is working a little bit slower, but what we do have on the agenda is a census presentation, a couple of resolutions to approve some modifications with regard to some grant projects, the local waterfront revitalization plan. We just have a little tweaking of budget lines there. And we have a minor change order for winter stabilization of the Stony Brook culvert. Reorganization is on the agenda. I'm not sure we'll take any action today, but if so, we'll be discussing that as well. And then boarding committee reports. So it's now 7:36, and we do have just a couple of brief announcements. I would like to let you know that the Asienzo Foundation is supporting a Red Hook Central School District Eighth Annual Senior Spring Social. It's open to Red Hook Central School District residents. It's Wednesday, March 18th, from 3:45 to 5:00 p.m. at the high school cafeteria. And there's a dinner menu if you aren't interested. We'll put this up on the town website, but you can contact Michelle Launey at 758-2241. That's the school number, extension 59501. The VFW, which is having a few events coming up this spring, would like everyone to know that on St. Patty's Day, they are having corned beef and cabbage dinner, and they have their VFW 500 raffle that they are doing again this year. On a very timely topic, I wanted to discuss with you and the public. I wanted to encourage you to once again consider, please, going to redhook.org and signing up for notifications, and I'll tell you why. Perhaps it's Monday now. You've already heard that the Centers for Disease Control has alerted us that we should at least be prepared for the coronavirus to make its way around. New Yorkers are famous for traveling and seeing the world, and so there's every expectation, if it does make its way around the U.S., that New York should be prepared. I've reached out today to our county executive, Mark Molinaro, and asked him to coordinate an effort to make the municipalities in Dutchess County have a coordinated plan should coronavirus knock on our doors, if you will. And of course, he was willing to do so, so we'll be working on that in the coming days. But it's a good example of why it's important that folks take advantage of this notification feature for our website, because we can keep you updated on that issue and many other topics that may be of importance to you. So again, it's redhook.org. At the top banner there, you'll see notify me. You select the topics you're interested in. Something like this would be under news alerts, and we can send it to your email, but we can also send it to your cellphone, so you're aware of it. Okay, those are the announcements I have. Does anyone else have an announcement to make? Can I find any public comment? All right, hearing none, I would like to welcome our good friend, an outstanding journalist, former journalist, I should say, John Penny from the Poughkeepsie Journal many years, and he's wearing a couple of different and new hats. And tonight, he's here as part of an effort to educate the public on the census, what we might expect, and how we can participate in such a way that it'll make it seamless for everyone. So, John, thanks very much.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I am John Penny. I'm the chair of what we call the Dutchess County Complete Count Committee. It's been charged with raising awareness about the importance of people filling out the 2020 census. As Rob mentioned, I was a former journalist. I was the opinion editor at the Poughkeepsie Journal for 20 years. And last year, I began sort of a unique partnership between the City of Poughkeepsie and Dutchess County governments, mainly in communications. I mostly work for the city, but I also get tasked with special projects by the county, and this is the one I'm working on right now, and it's, you know, it's a considerable one, for sure. So with that, I'll just start, why do we do this and why is it important? Well, the census we do, as you know, you probably know, every 10 years, we, the charge is to count everyone. And when we say everyone, we mean everyone. It doesn't matter their legal status here. If they're breathing and they're in the United States, we want them counted. And so you might ask, well, why do we do that? There's a number of good reasons. There's two significant ones. One is after this count is done, political lines will be redrawn based on those numbers. You may recall that before 2010, we used to have three congressional representatives in this area. We now have two. I often think that or often say that I should be able to stop right there and not continue the presentation, because that should explain enough about why importance is. But Rob, if you can go to the second slide? We'll go to the second big reason. And the second big reason is money. Big money is on the line, $675 billion. It affects about 132 federal programs, everything from highway to housing money to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program that we know as SNAP, to something that's near and dear to most municipalities' hearts, the community development block grants that you get. So again, if you are a town that's undercounted, you will inevitably be financially hurt. You'll get fewer dollars than you should be getting if everyone were counted. So we'll go to the next slide. So hopefully, I have you convinced this is important, and your question may be, so how does this work? What happens next? It's a good question. In mid-March, and we're getting close to this now. I've been doing this roadshow since about August, believe it or not. I think you're the 25th out of 30 municipalities I'm going to, so thanks for having me, I should say. You'll get an invitation by the mail. Most of us will. About 95% of us will get an invitation through the mail to fill out the census. The interesting thing about it this year is for the first time ever, you can fill it out online. It's never been done before. And if you don't want to do that, you can still do it the old-fashioned way. You can request the form and do it by longhand, or you could actually, you could actually call it in. So if you can go to the next slide. This explains what the other 5% is made up of. It's basically people with P.O. boxes. This is very important, that the census tracks by address. It does not send a census to a P.O. box. If you have a P.O. box, you can access the information online, or what's going to happen in most cases is a field worker, someone's going to drop off information at your physical residence. And as this process goes on, and I'll explain this, if you haven't filled it out, that's where the field workers go out to find anyone who hasn't filled it out yet. So the other people who won't get it are people of what we call in far-flung places like Maine and Alaska. I covered the census, I think, three times as a journalist, you know, in a more passive way. Wasn't an expert then, don't even really feel like I'm an expert now. I've certainly learned a lot. But one of the things that I was interested to learn is the count actually, I've always equated the count with being April, March, and April, May. The count actually has started in Alaska and Maine. They go out there first, because they know that's the only way they're going to reach those people. I kind of found that to be interesting. So the next slide. This gives you a good breakdown of how this is going to work on the timeline. One thing to know about the census, it is very persistent. It won't take no for an answer. The best thing you could do to get on with your life, particularly since you can do this online, is to, when you get it, fill out that form. There'll be a 10-digit code that you punch into. You go to a website, you punch in that code, and your census, the beginning of it, will come up for you to fill out. Again, it'll take you about 12 minutes to do, about 12 to 15 minutes, depending how many people you have in your family, and you can get on with your life, and you won't have to deal with what inevitably will happen next. What will happen next is the census will send several reminders, and if you haven't responded by late April, that's when the field workers go out and start knocking on doors. And that process will last until, actually, all the way to July. We're certainly hoping that we have it wrapped up before then, but that it's a very, it's a pretty long process, because it will take the field workers a fair amount of time to finish up. I do want to tell you, we have some hard-to-count areas in Dutchess County. Red Hook is not one of them. What we mean by hard-to-count area is any place that has a response rate by the initial mailings of somewhere in the neighborhood of 72% or fewer. Our hard-to-count areas are mainly City of Poughkeepsie, the north side of Poughkeepsie, in between the arterials, Dover, parts of Dover, parts of Wapanger, parts of Wapanger Falls, and Fishkill. And what those places have in commonality are a high Latino population, and if you look at poverty rates and education, those are also indicators. So if you can go to the next slide. This is very important and hopefully segue nicely into what I just said about particularly the Latino population, but actually, it involves everyone. A lot of people will be reluctant or won't fill out this form because they're afraid of privacy. And I'm here to tell you that the census is completely, it is confidential, completely confidential. The census is not a two-way street. It's a one-way street. The census can and does ask information from all sorts of agencies, so it can get the most data available, so it can do an accurate count, but it cannot share that information out. It can't share it with the public. It couldn't share it with me and my former life if I foiled for it, and it can't share it even with federal agencies, including ICE, which is very important to explain to people who may be reluctant to fill out a form for that reason. If someone is found in violation of that, they face a $250,000 fine and/or five years in prison. This is a really important point, and I encourage you to spread the word about how important it is for people to fill out the census and to make that point known. Next slide. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, and I'm almost wrapped up, but it basically says, the younger you are, the less likely you are to fill it out. I always use this as an opportunity to emphasize another thing about the census. Children are historically undercounted in the census. It goes back to some degree to the reasons of privacy. People don't, parents don't want to give out information about their children, or you could be filling out, filling out the form, and there's a nine-month-old baby right by you, and you don't think this pertains to that baby, but it does. The census count is a 10-year, 10 years in longevity. If the town of Red Hook is going for, to build a play park or do many, many other things that benefit kids, and you have an undercount, and you have an undercount to your children, they will be hurt by this, and the town will be financially hurt by it. So two more slides, and we're done. We have a committee. It's a very robust committee, 15-member committee. The committee's working very hard in many facets. I like to say that every person on this committee is a subcommittee unto itself. We have people who are very good at, you know, basic 101 outreach, door-to-door kind of outreach, like "Nobody Leaves Mid Hudson." We're going to be out there canvassing and doing things in our hard-to-count areas. We have four people who are bilingual on the committee, working very hard on the Latino population. We have people who have been doing outreach in our communities for decades, and we have younger people who are in strategically important places like the north side of Poughkeepsie, who have a pretty good megaphone through social media and are talking in ways that I cannot talk to reach, you know, to groups of people. And this, this really works by trusted voices. I have a fair amount of people who trust me, because I'm a former journalist in this area, but you all have a lot of people who trust you, and they gave you something very sacred. They gave you your vote. So I encourage you to use that to get people to fill out the census. So the last slide just basically tells you how to find us. If you Googled Dutchess County Complete Count Committee, I promise you, the first thing that will come up is the county's website. We have a webpage devoted to this. It has a lot of very useful information. You can reach me at completecount@dachessny.gov. And with that, I will take any questions.
Great, thank you very much, John.
Yeah, so first, thank you for this. A question I have is with respect to, so we have a college in our community.
Yes.
So for students that, you know, live on campus, maybe they are from California or from New Jersey or something like that, how does the count work for students?
Excellent, excellent question. Students get counted on, at the college.
Okay.
So, but there, let me divide that a little bit. They get, they counted at the college for two reasons. One, they're there longer here than they are at home, in theory, for most of them are. And two, it's where they are on April 1st. And April 1st is an important date. The census does ask you where you are on April 1st, so that becomes, you know, a telltale sign also. But the interesting thing is, if they're on campus, the college will count them. If they're off-campus, again, I go back to the census tracks by address. The census will be sent to that address, and they have to fill it out there.
Great, thank you. Other questions?
So that's probably part of the follow-up then, in person with census takers, since that college ages usually fall into the age groups that you say are less likely to fill out?
Yeah, you would, you would assume that would be. It may, again, there's.
And they may think they're getting counted.
I always say there's a million, million stories in the naked city kind of thing.
Right.
There, some of that information, it may go to the landlord, and so it'll be on the landlord to say, okay, I've got people living in this house. You know, it could, it could go a lot of, you know, it could go a lot of different ways. But I always try to explain it this way to people. If you've been on parcel access, or if you've seen a subdivision, right, plans of a subdivision, right now, picture those little blocks as all having red Xs in it, because nobody's filled out the census. Once, once people start filling in the census, they become green checkmarks essentially. I don't know if they use it exactly like that, but you get what I'm talking about. We will actually be able to go online in late March, all of us, and you'll be able to look at the tracks and census tracks in Red Hook, and you'll be able to see your response rate. That's going to be very helpful, because we're going to know where we need to put more resources to try to get people to fill out the form. Our goal is to, our goal quite frankly is this, if this worked perfectly, that everyone who doesn't really have a major problem filling this out, that really shouldn't have a major problem filling it out, does that. So when the field workers inevitably have to come out, they're concentrating on a smaller number and, in theory, perhaps get our numbers up, because I do think that our population is higher than the census suggests. That would be a wonderful thing. You know, how is this going to go? I don't know, but that's my goal. If this, if, in a perfect world, at the end of this, we, you know, everyone says our population's going to go down in Dutchess County and in New York, what a wonderful thing would it be if we actually counted everybody and really found out where we were?
So I don't see anybody on your committee, because we have four colleges in Dutchess County, so I don't see anybody on the committee. So do you have specific?
Yeah, that's.
Education materials and outreach?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. We've been, we have been in touch with the colleges in different ways. So they are, they've also been notified in different ways. If they're a SUNY, they've been, I know, you know, you have concerns about particularly Bard, but there are a lot of activists. There's a lot of people on the Bard campus that are, this has become, this has become a very big issue for a lot of people. So I have no doubt that awareness is being raised about this on the college campuses. SUNY has been charged through the governor's office to do outreach and to do things also. But that, this is another place, quite frankly, where you could help us. If, you know, if you, if you could put out that word, because I'm not going to stay here and say, I actually have said this before meetings, we have a really good committee, and it's working hard, but if we rely just on that committee, we are not going to be successful.
Okay, thank you.
It's why I'm, it's why I'm here, really, to kind of help try to get all the municipalities to help us.
John, my question is, there's going to be a small segment of the population that might need assistance in filling out the questionnaire?
Right.
And what resources are available, or what might you suggest?
Again, a great question. I'm going to start with the one certain place, the library. And the library, I've actually, I've spoken at the Red Hook Library, and I'm getting her name forgiven. She was terrific, and she, the whole library network, Mid Hudson Library Network is dialed in on this. You could certainly talk to her, but she, and I will reach out too, in terms of hours and things like that, but they are what we call a safe site, where people can go to get information. This will also start getting out. The numbers haven't gone live yet. The census has, I think it's about 12 devoted numbers to this. So this is not one of those cases where you have to, you know, press one for English. There is a specific number for Spanish. The libraries will have that information, so if someone comes in and needs help, and there's no one who's bilingual that can help them, we can, there's ways to navigate that through the census. Really, the census is there to provide the guidance, the direct guidance, and nobody can fill out the form for the person. But we could certainly, we can certainly be a place where they can go to get, to get help.
And Community Action, we have a local office here. Would they be participating in this effort?
Yeah, as it turns out, I happen to be on the board of directors of Community Action, and that's been a conversation that we've talked about. I think one of the things to keep in mind is, most people will be in touch in some way by some agency, and what we're encouraging those agencies to do is to, you know, like Dutchess Outreach, for example, they do a lot of different types of outreach. So in the normal course of their outreach, they're talking about the census. In the normal course of their outreach, they're telling their clients, here's this thing called the census, and if you need help, come to us. So that's, that's one way where, that's probably the best way to work. I think it's a little bit of a stretch for us to think that if someone is reluctant to fill us out, wants to get help, is going to reach out to an agency they don't know to do that. I think, I think it's going to work best if we, we try to deal with any agencies that they do know.
Right. I'm thinking, you know, in particular, we don't have a homelessness significant population here in Red Hook, but there are probably other municipalities around that, you know, maybe that's an issue, and they do interact with some of the social service.
And homelessness, there's, there's a couple of things. At Dutchess County, keeps a list. There are some people, these, these get varied, they're, these, the homelessness, homeless folks and the people in colleges and people in jails, they're actually called, well, homelessness's are. The other ones are called special quarters. But my point being is, there's parts of the census operation that deal just with that. And the way that works is they're, they're getting information from, from the county, from places like Hudson River Housing. They've actually, I've helped facilitate some of that to the census. One of the things we did was getting hold of the police departments in the City of Poughkeepsie and Beacon, and it's down to this granular level that the beep patrols have provided information of the places that they historically or normally see homeless people at, staying. And then what the census is going to do is a couple, there's going to be a couple of nights at the beginning of this, where they're going to actually go out and count, count people. But there are, there are some complicated cases, such as, what if someone is basically homeless during the day, but they're in a motel in Hyde Park at night? And so we're, we're trying to account for all of it as much as we can.
What about members of the military? Is that a special quarters? If they're, I mean, if they're on a base here in the United States somewhere, then I assume they get counted.
Right, they get counted. That's my, that's my understanding.
So if they're overseas somewhere, is that special quarters?
Yeah, that is my understanding, that they get counted. But if you're a student in a foreign exchange, I.
So if you're a college overseas or something?
I believe you don't.
You don't.
Yeah.
So I think we'll, we'll put all this information on our town website.
Yes.
And a link to the county page, and hopefully, that'll help if you have any questions. We're happy to try and fill them here at Town Hall, and most likely, we'll punt them to you. I see we have a question in the audience.
Sure.
Yeah. How do you verify the information? Could somebody put their dogs and cats on?
Well, it says, don't, you know, it's, there's no information for dogs and cats. It's people, but, you know, I, to some degree, there's an honor system there, but yeah.
Because there have been people who have gotten credit cards for their dogs.
Right, no, that's, that's, that's true, that's true.
Okay.
We don't encourage people to do that.
Yeah.
We want an accurate count.
Pets owner get credit cards for their dogs.
What's the interest rate?
Thanks, okay, thank you.
John, thank you very much, as always. It's great to see you.
Okay.
We're moving right along. Just a couple of tweaks. Here we have a modification to the grant budget on our LWRP update. Two years in the making, Paula, the project?
Not quite.
Not quite? You, you and your committee have been working on it? Okay. We just needed a little bit of money towards mapping, is that right?
Well, we changed things around.
Okay.
Well, it's also been some input from the Department of State, right, which caused us to have to change some things.
Well, we weren't needing, we needed to meet the women and minority-owned business lines requirement.
Okay, so we have a resolution. We actually have a couple documents in this folder for next meeting. I don't know how to made it in there, but we do have resolution number?
Nine.
Nine, thank you, Sue. Authorizing execution of contract modification. And you have that, both the current budget and amended budget, slightly lower salaries from $38.50 to $3100, supplies a reduction there, and increasing contractual services of $2,000.
I don't have that.
All right, best, best that around. Let's, let's move on. Will you all take a look at that?
I've got another one. Do you want to?
But you, please do this, actually, these two. You have it, you've had it digitally.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want you to have a workbook in front of you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Sorry. I don't know why it was not in your folder, since it's in mine. Okay, so it's resolution number nine, dated February 26, authorizing execution of contract modification. And I assume, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item is slight change order, winter stabilization, Stony Brook culvert. As you are aware, there have been some erosion issues related to the installation of the culvert, and so we are looking at a conclusion of that construction project sometime late summer, early fall of 2020, so I want to advise you of that. The engineers have to propose some corrective measures, and so we'll have more information about that, but I do want to prepare you for further delay on the reopening of Stony Brook Road. So this change order relates to work to stabilize the culvert over the winter, and you have had the memo from the engineer and the detail of those changes. The change order is in the amount of $8,759. It's resolution number 10, dated today, authorizing change order for the town of Red Hook, Stony Brook Road Culver Replacement Project. Nice move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our reorganization, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know. Does anybody have any appointments that they would like to make or updates? I know that since our last couple of meetings, we've put some interested volunteers in touch with folks from the various committees. We also have a couple of committees we're trying to get up and running. For those folks interested in those committees, we thank you for your patience, because we have to sort of take a longer time and try and get a group together. Jacob, did you, did you have any?
Yeah.
I think you had mentioned maybe about a vacancy that any of this time.
Yes, so Richard Wambach.
Yes, so Richard Wambach, Director of the Economic Development Committee, said he would not be able to continue. So that's going to be a third vacancy that I'm aware of.
Okay. Terrific. Now, once again, we'll be tackling this more in March, but if you are interested in joining one of our committees or boards, we would like to add you to the list of interested folks. And please take a look on our website to see what is of interest to you. And we'll be coming back to that again at our next meeting. Okay, if there's no more on that topic, we can move right into board reports. And Ryan?
What?
Yes, we did that.
We did.
We took care of it. Oh, no, 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 no. It's just here, in case we had any questions about that. No, we took care of that. That was just a tiny little change to the budget line and the grant thing. Okay. Bill, we have a Town of Red Hook Water District report. If you could summarize for us a couple of highlights, please?
Well, the wells are both pumping water at about a hundred and forty-five gallons per minute. There seems to be no shortage of water currently. They are looking at some issues about revamping the ability to turn the pumps on and off remotely. They're looking at some options, either some kind of wireless or some other, some other options. And use like a radio control with a timer. And there's some issues regarding probe meters not fitting in the current wells that they need to address. And the only issue is that normally the gout, the both of the wells pump at about two hundred and ten gallons per minute. And it's kind of an odd coincidence that they're now just doing one forty-five. And they're trying to eliminate all the potential issues that could be electrical. It would be unusual for one, for them both to be exactly the same. It has nothing to do with the amount of water. So they're, they're trying to explore why it is that they're both showing the exact same amount when it's, that's just not.
Not possible.
Yeah, but there's no shortage of water. They're pumping, they're pumping the correct amount of water. They just don't know why the meters are both reading that lesser amount. And they'll work it out.
Very good. Bill O'Neill, we have a zoning Board of Appeals monthly report?
Well, the Zoning Board of Appeals met twice, January eighth and February twelfth. The January eighth report shows that there was a public hearing on the application for an area variance for property on Spring Lake Road. And that area variance was granted with certain conditions to be met by the applicant, which would result in eleven percent building coverage increase for that particular property. So that was agreed upon. And there was an application for another area variance to increase the building coverage six percent for a parcel on One Wildy Road in the Barrytown Hamlet. And that was discussed and there'd be a public hearing. I'm sorry. Then, and the board voted in favor of declaring the proposal and setting a public hearing for February twelfth. Then at the February twelfth meeting, that public hearing was held. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the board voted to continue the public hearing from March eleventh. So that was continued. Also, at the, at the February twelfth meeting, there was a public hearing continued on the application for an area variance to install a wind power turbine on the Hermance Farm up on West Curly Corners Road. That has been the subject of continuing meetings before the ZVA. And after this public hearing, which concluded that night, February twelfth, the ZVA voted to deny the request for variance. And they listed the varying grounds which, which they found to be applicable to the application. And that's the report from the ZVA.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. I notice we don't have a, a report from the planning board. Bill, how long did they meet since we last met? Do you know? Or did they cancel the meeting?
I don't know. I saw an agenda, but I don't know if they actually.
I, I know the next meeting is post Monday, yeah.
Just this coming Monday, yeah.
All right. Monthly dog control report, Bill?
Well, January was a relatively light month. There was one dog at large that was caught without incident in January by the SPCA. And supervisor and I, I had what I thought was a very productive meeting with the new leadership at the Duchess County SPCA to talk about some issues with our contract, some concerns we had. And I thought that they were engaged and attentive to some of the comments we had. I felt good about it.
Yeah, I understand that they're having some construction work done and a rather significant expansion.
Yeah, they're, they're enlarging their, their facility in Hyde Park.
Yeah. Good. All right. We also have a 2019 yearly report from our Justice Court, so I can summarize them. Judge Mansfield reports a total of four hundred and ninety-three vehicle and traffic cases. Penal adds up to sixty-seven small claims for, and then, you know, some odd ones headed down the list. Fines totaling twenty-six thousand two hundred and ten, a little over a thousand dollars in civil fees and surcharges, which of course go to the state. A total of forty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-four. And each Justice Court has to report these figures by the end of the year. Vehicle and traffic, three hundred and ninety for Judge Preblosser, penal forty, and scatter from small claims all the way through ag and markets, speaking of dogs. Fines of twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-seven, civil fees of a few hundred dollars, surcharges to the state of fifteen thousand, for a total of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and seven. Bill Hemmle, we also have building and zoning for February 2020?
Yeah, there were eighteen permits issued. There were nineteen inspections conducted by the staff. There were fifteen certificate of occupancies issued, there were no complaints received, and the revenue for the building department was four thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars.
Jacob, would you like to report? I know Teresa's not with us tonight. Would you like to give a summation of Highway Department activities?
Yes. So this is the report for today. Some highlights, installed two high-visibility Chevron signs in a curb on Amherst Street in College Park. Replaced three faded signs on Norton Road with a high-visibility curb ahead signs, error, and twenty-five mile per hour advisory speed signs. Cut brush and low-hanging tree limbs in preparation for summer paving work on Aspen Wall, Kelly and Walesback Roads. Cut and chipped brush on other town roads. Completed safety training in-house with a Highway Department crew on various topics such as lockout-tagout, hazardous chemical identification, bloodborne pathogens, forklift safety, and eye and hearing protections, and performed service and maintenance on various pieces of equipment. One thing that Teresa noted is if the mild weather continues, we've been having some nice temperatures lately. We'll be working on our tree service contractor the first week in March, taking down some problems trees.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Jacob. Bill O'Neill, Red Hook Police Department report, if you could summarize for us, please?
Well, the Red Hook Police Department for January up through February fourth reported total number of incidents for that period was ninety. They made two arrests and issued a total of sixteen tickets during that multi-period.
And I'm reminded we need to update our contract with the Red Hook Police as the new year has begun. So, well, that'll be on the agenda for our next one, the next meeting, right? Town of Red Hook Disaster Preparedness Committee met January twenty-first, 2020. They discussed updates to the emergency plan, and that will be distributed. We're still on target with an early April tabletop exercise for elected officials and appropriate staff. This is a tabletop exercise drill in the event there should be a disaster in our area. And so that is being coordinated as well. Nine eleven signage is still an issue, and we'll be coming to the Town Board to discuss how we can increase the implementation of the law that was put in place by the county many years ago. As you can imagine, our emergency responders need to know when they receive a call exactly where the house is. And oftentimes with some of the driveways that we have in our communities, it's, it's not easy to figure out. So we are trying to increase compliance and make it safe and easy for our responders. New business, identified locations in our community that need generators. There was a get-together, if you will, on resiliency at the community center about a week and a half ago. And there are many actions that we can take to improve resiliency in our community, not the least of which is ensuring that a lot of our public spaces are prepared in the event of extended power outages. And so we'll be taking a look at our vulnerabilities there as well. And we even want to try and schedule for March, so that's what. Economic Development Committee, Jacob, would you like to summarize that?
Sure. So for the meeting that took place on Wednesday, February twelfth, there wasn't a quorum for the meeting, but there was still a lot of discussion, including about the state of the real estate business. There was an update for the sewer project over in the village. There was some talk about modifying zoning from the highway business to general business to include Build GLF, Red Hook Electric and its gas station, as well as Firehouse Lane to enable connection to the town's T and D. And there's ongoing discussion about short-term rentals. The, a lot of the Economic Development Committee was present for the Northern Duchess Alliance meeting that took place this morning, the breakfast this morning, over in Ryanbeck. So I think that those are the highlights for the meeting. There was a lot of discussion about.
And sewer, don't forget sewer.
Isn't the sewer mentioned?
Oh, you did. That it received its plan.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's an update since that meeting.
Yeah.
So really good news for that, that that project seems to be moving forward.
The Red Hook Village Sewer System finally received approval by Duchess County Department of Health. And you can get more information about that, obviously, from the mayor and deputy mayor there in the village. And you did mention some zoning issues or zoning proposed changes. You were referring to the village.
Yes, that was for the villages. Yes, correct.
Bill O'Neill, a summary or update on the intermunicipal task force?
Well, the intermunicipal task force submitted its one hundred and eighty-third report, February, showing that at weekly meetings in January and February, they continue to discuss the topic of short-term rentals for the Town of Red Hook, amending language of previous drafts and proposed regulations preparatory to meeting with the plaintiff for the Town of Red Hook, which is scheduled for this coming Friday.
And we'll be talking about more info sessions, or at least?
Yes.
And getting more community input on, on that topic?
Yes.
Okay. Also, Bill, while you've got the mic, if you will, the LWRP Advisory Committee, if you could give us an update on that?
Yeah, the, the committee met on February eighteenth, as they're doing every month, and had a very meaningful discussion. There's work being done currently on the maps for one of the sections of the LWRP. Most of the committee time was spent, though, discussing the policies. You remember in 1995, the LWRP originally was created by the Town of Red Hook, the request of the state. And it's that report which is being updated by this current advisory committee. And in that 1995 report, there were certain policies that were written based upon state policies that were encouraged to be followed by the municipalities along the Hudson River. So the committee is discussing how to revise those policies and present them in the update. And that's quite a challenge and a lot of work. And it's continuing. The next meeting is March twenty-fourth.
Do you, what did you decide, your committee? Are you addressing the fencing issue? The proposed, as you know, Amtrak's back at the, the drawing board, discussing, you know, fencing off significant areas along the railroad tracks? Is that something you'll address in the update of the LWRP?
Well, I'll refer to Paula, but I think that's going to be obviously discussed in the, in the updated LWRP. But as far as the resolution goes, it's pretty much up in the air, right? Because the railroad wants it and the municipalities are resisting it. So the question is, what happens?
Well, Amtrak has said that they will hold a meeting with, you know, neighboring townships.
At least they have, right?
Well, no, they, they were going to. They, they delayed that. So, you know, I'm waiting to hear back on when they are going to reschedule. So that's something that we want to keep our eyes out for and participate in and get some, some input on that discussion.
Well, I think the LWRP Advisory Committee would be aware of that, too.
Okay. Very good. Christine Kane, the Town of Red Hook Recreation Commission report, and it's always a very extensive report. If you could just, the, oh, thorough is a better word.
Well, I'll try to go to summarize as best I can.
Please, please the highlights.
It is important to say that there is a lot going on with our recreational facilities. And the rec committee should really be commended for how many balls they're juggling and how much stuff they're getting done. For sure. So one of the important things to mention is that we are having a lot of construction that's going on at both of the rec parks, east and west. And so east is affecting several of the project's use and other things that are going to become scheduling. So for instance, we have an annual fishing contest in April every year with the Red Hook Round of Gun Club. And the dates are set, so it's supposed to be Saturday, April eleventh, and then they would do the stocking the day before on the tenth of April. But again, that is yet to be fully decided because of all the construction and whether people will really be able to park and access, and there's going to be bathrooms and all sorts of things, so. And that also is impacting the ability, perhaps, for the school district to be able to use the softball and baseball fields this year. So we will know more in the next month or so, I think. As far as some of that construction goes, the drainage system under the all-purpose field is installed. And so it'll be moving ahead with putting in the stone and then the fabric that's going to underlay the field. Our rec committee does a fantastic job of trying to reuse materials wherever they can. So for instance, as part of this overall construction project, six telephone poles were taken out from the middle field. We had plans to use those to provide lighting for the new pickleball courts. They're in, two of them broke, and the other ones are not in good enough shape. So now the rec committee is looking at other options for lighting the pickleball field. However, they might be able to use those telephone poles to improve a situation near the pool where we have an underground service line, electric service line. And it's at the edge of the blacktop, and apparently people keep pulling off of the blacktop, and that's going to make it crush, so they may be able to put those there. So they're, they're really great at trying to keep costs down and reuse whatever materials we have. So there's also some improvements coming to the skate park. They're working on trying to, there are a lot of other light fixtures. Working on hiring the director and assistants for the summer rec program. As part of that, the summer rec program and a lot of the other programs that we have, John Kuhn is working to see what he can put on the Red Hook website and how we can. John Kuhn is working to see what he can put on the Red Hook website and how we can incorporate online signups and getting people, the parents and the families that participate in that, to sign up for alerts so that we can, you know, weather alerts, if there's storms, et cetera, we can get the information out to them very quickly. Ongoing things are painting and marking of the various courts, the basketball courts, for instance, scoreboards. Let's see. So with all this construction that's going on, the park is technically closed. However, people continue to ignore any kind of signage, construction fences, et cetera, and just use the park for walking their dogs or activities. So that is a bit of a problem. We're going to look at putting, again, you know, fixing the signs that are there, but it is important that people know that the park is closed. There are dangerous, you know, things going on. There's digging, there's equipment around, not to mention right now, even though we have nice weather, it makes things very, very wet. So if you walk on the track, then we've got, you make big footprints and holes and all that has to be cleaned up in the spring. So we really do have to ask people to respect the fact that the park is closed right now during the construction. We do have lots of other places in town where you can go to walk and exercise and walk your dogs. So if you could use those until we get this all completed, it'd be a lot safer for everybody. And some of the, again, in the reusing, in economics, there's a lot of dirt currently at the REC park because of all the digging that's been happening. And some of that is going to get reused at the Red Church Cemetery to fill in some of the sunken graves and fix the roads and some other things that are there. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, but there's lots of other things going on, and I applaud them again for how much they're getting done and how many projects they're working on at one time.
Thank you very much, Christine. And just to remind folks, the Town of Red Hook took over maintenance of the combined Red Hook Reinbeck Dog Park that is off of Yance Road. If you look up at the map there, near Stone Church Road, there is no longer a fee to take your pet there. You don't need to sign up. It's a free service that we're offering, and we encourage you to take advantage of that. Okay.
There is a law in our code book about the dog park.
Yes.
That has to be revised.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on revising our law. That's, I think we have our first draft on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Red Church Cemetery Bill?
Well, the cemetery committee met this morning. Again, it meets every month. The highlights of the meeting were that the New York State Division of Cemeteries confirmed that they're going to grant the town of Red Hook $32,535 and change for a grant to maintain the cemetery, which, as everybody knows, we inherited under state law from the previous ownership of the Red Church Cemetery. And it included the historic building, the Red Church itself. But one thing to report is that the, thanks to the help of Lori Pierce of the Highway Department and Jackie Fetteroli in the Town Hall, there's now a listing for the Red Church Cemetery Committee at redhook.org. So if you want to, you can go on that site, which now lists the rules and regulations, the price list for plots and grave openings, and a brief history of the Red Church. And later in the year, we're going to add pictures of the church and the cemetery to the website. And of course, every monthly report done by John Kuhn for the Red Church Cemetery Committee is included now on our website. And there's a list of like 14 projects that the committee has in mind, which will be pursued during 2020. And we're going to focus attention on those in the months to come.
Thank you very much, Bill. The Senior Services Committee, I'll give a quick update. They were talking about our VANS that we've applied for and looking to formulate a questionnaire for seniors and others in the community of how best we might mobilize those VANS when we, in fact, do receive them. And so they're going to have some informational sessions, but also a survey for folks to fill out to get some info from the community. Town of Red Hook Tree Preservation Commission, Jacob, if you could give us a brief update?
So the February 18th meeting, there was discussion of a lot of work that's been done on Pitcher Lane, including a stump removal, weed whacking and generalized pruning being completed, planting sites for six new trees have been staked. In addition to that, seven trees for the spring planting Arbor Day celebration have been ordered. And there was also discussion for the Arbor Day celebration. So it's good stuff.
All right.
Can I raise an issue while we're talking about that?
Oh, about the tree?
Well, if you drive, not on Pitcher Lane, but on Rockefeller Lane, adjacent to it. Someone has done a very excellent job in trimming all those trees between Route 9 and the school.
Yeah.
The question is, who's supposed to pick those up and get rid of them? Because they've been laying there, I think, for weeks. Does anybody know? I mean, it's on private property.
No.
Does anybody, is anybody aware of it?
Pop and Sam discussions with Van who owns that property, and they're trying to decide what's the best way to handle that. But it's of concern and it'll be taken care of soon.
Well, who did the work? The tree committee did it?
Yeah, a Hop and...
A Hop and the tree committee?
And the other boy.
Cody?
Cody, yeah.
Well, anyway, so they trimmed the trees and they organized the trimmings in piles along the road.
Right.
So who's going to be responsible for what happens to those piles?
Well, like I said, they're having discussions with Van who owns the property, and if he wants that chipped up, he can use those chips. So it's really being discussed. Hop's taking care of it.
And that's something that was on the report that I skipped over.
Oh, was it?
There's an acknowledgement of the first pile's having been removed.
Because it, you know, it looks like great work, somebody did, but then it's kind of been left.
We're taking care of it.
Okay, good.
I think that completes the committee reports that we have. We have one item in correspondence from New York State Department of State asking for any comments that we might have on the Annandale Micros Hydro Project. As you know, that project is regulated by FERC, but Department of State is looking for any input that we may have. I think we have that rather extensive document I've sent to you digitally. And if there's any comments that you have, please go ahead and share that. Okay, that concludes our business for the evening. Is there any public comments before we close the evening?
Excuse me. Sorry about that. It's not a comment. I just wondered if you, Robert, or you, Mr. O'Neill, could explain in detail the process that the ITF is going to follow with short-term rentals, starting with whatever's happening on Friday and then whatever subsequent activities are going to happen.
Okay.
Well, on Friday, the task force is going to meet with the planner for the town. After that...
Who is that?
Michelle Greig.
Michelle Greig from Green Plan Inc.
Okay, yeah.
And after that, there'll probably be one meeting or two to formalize, you know, ideas about, from the task force. And then we will have the EDC set a date for the next informational meetings where the task force will present in specific language what the proposed regulations would be with respect to short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook. And we will give copies of those proposed amendments to the zoning to the EDC beforehand so they can enter into the discussion at that informational meeting. After that, there probably will be a decision whether with the EDC we need another informational meeting, but let's assume we don't. Then the task force will propose to the Red Hook Town Board through the supervisor's office, you know, proposed language to amend the zoning law to regulate short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook. Once that is received by the administration in the town of Red Hook, then it's up to the administration to maybe have the lawyers look at it or the planner look at it or do whatever they want with it. And then at some point, it'll be referred to the town board, and the town board then will, you know, consider it. And then at least, you know, by law, have to have public hearings. So those public hearings would probably be a little extensive in a legislation like this. And so how the town board proposes to do that is up to the town board. After that, the town board will be asked to vote, you know, or to have somebody propose some different legislation on the same subject or none at all.
Okay. So on Friday, what is the role that Ms. Greig or Greig, what is the role that she's playing and what's the conversation that's going to take place?
Well, the professional planner for the town of Red Hook, you know, gives advice to, for example, the task force as to what perhaps is happening in other jurisdictions, what kind of rules and regulations are being applied there. The planner itself, Green Plan Inc., may have clients, you know, that they're preparing rules and regulations for in other areas. So that kind of information is exchanged. We, the task force will present to the planner what the thinking has been up to this point as far as hosted versus unhosted, class one, class two, class three rentals, that sort of thing. And the planner then basically, you know, gives us advice whether it makes sense, does it make sense, whether it's lawful, whether it's not lawful, and that sort of thing. So then the dialogue just starts.
Got it. So she's kind of like an expert witness? Is that how you would describe her? Or is she going to be taking...
I wouldn't go that far. No, she's just a professional planner who hopefully knows a little bit more about zoning and planning than the average member of the task force or any committee in the town of Red Hook. And so we do pay them by contract. That is, the town of Red Hook pays them by contract, and it's for advice and direction. And then they actually draft the law once we make any proposals. And then when it's in writing, then I think the attorney for the town gets involved preliminarily to see whether there's anything that has to be done. Because once you change one aspect of the zoning law, it impacts on another aspect of the zoning law, you have to coordinate it. So the attorney for the town may get involved in that level before it goes to the final, you know, draft before town board.
So we're skipping some steps that I'm not understanding. So is it okay if I just ask questions or should I stand at the mic?
No, it's fine, but I'm going to ask you if you could just maybe make it a few minutes. We normally during public comment, we limit it to three minutes, but I want to allow you an opportunity.
Okay, or if there's another venue for me to ask these questions?
Yeah, absolutely. The two of you can take it offline, but I think to sort of summarize for you, Emily, the task forces, like many of our committees, they're advisory in nature. And when they feel they have something that they want to recommend to the town board, they do so. Oftentimes, it requires a consultant of some sort to assist them in formulating recommendations. And that's sort of where we are right now, is that this advisory committee is taking a look at a topic that is both timely and trying to formulate some recommendations. And I think what we've heard tonight is that they'll be going out again to the public to do at least one more info session, if not more than that, to make sure that we're getting more voices and hearing more voices and, you know, we can shape sort of the best result.
The part I'm trying to understand, and I can ask it, but I think it is beneficial to hear it here from, so everybody hears it, is this action that's going to be taking place on Friday or in the minutes and hours thereafter related to the actual drafting of legislation? Or is she simply here to kind of talk and give some ideas? Or is, are we moving to the point where you have, where this commission is, or this ITC, ITF, is making concrete, specific recommendations? And if so, what are they?
Yeah, again, I can't answer that for you. I don't sit in those meetings.
Well, Bill could, because he's...
Suffice it, yeah, suffice it to say that the idea of working with a consultant is to try and put something on paper as a starting point so that people can, we can actually share something as opposed to sort of passing on sentiment or generalization. So I would imagine that hopefully that there will be, at some point, some ideas of what we could, you know, use as a jumping off point.
Well, I understand at some point, I'm asking about if it's this Friday, is this Friday that moment where she starts to codify? Well, Bill O'Neill is head of the committee, so can he tell us?
Well, no, I mean, her final statement would be at these public hearings before the board, because the board pays her to tell the community what this new legislation proposal is.
Right.
So that would be the time to confront and to understand what their reasoning is, whether the individual board members adopt that reasoning or challenge it or reject it is really up to the board.
I know, but you're, that's not what I'm asking.
I think he said it earlier.
I'm asking about when it gets, when it's stated.
This is discussion. So the meeting this Friday, bringing in the planner to begin discussing with the members of the task force, the feedback that they've gotten and the research that they've done, and then what's happening in other places, what are trends, what has been challenged or workable. So it's a very beginning. So there's not going to be drafting of legislation on Friday.
Well, I think they are working on some sort of...
Okay, so drafting to get anything on Friday?
Yeah, again.
Well, I mean, I mean, if somebody says if you want to rent one bedroom or two bedrooms in a home in the town of Red Hook, a person should be allowed to do that as a short-term rental, but only in certain districts. Now, this is a discussion that the task force has, and there's a consensus of their opinion. So suppose their opinion is, yeah, you should be able to have one to two bedrooms rented out as a short-term rental in a house in the RD5 zoning district in the town of Red Hook. That's a short-term rental in that zoning district of that capacity.
Right.
So then we say to the planner, that's what we're thinking about. And then the planner answers whether the zoning district is appropriate, the capacity is appropriate, whether you can do it at all, what the upside is, the downside. And then the task force listens to that, and some reject it, some contest it, some accept it.
Right.
And then eventually, the task force looks at each other and says, so what do we want to recommend? Well, we want to recommend two bedrooms, RD5. You can have it as a short-term rental, period.
Got it, okay.
So that's the way the discussion goes. So, but from that point on, you still have the town board that has to make the decision, public hearings on, this is what the town board has been looking at, which is what has been proposed.
And what's the difference between...
And then you make a decision.
Yeah. What's the difference between an info session and a public hearing?
Okay, one is legal in nature. It's a requirement when you make changes to zoning, and an info session is something to discuss with the public and bring them sort of up to speed about where we are and what's being contemplated and primarily to really get the input from the public on these topics. And that's why it's helpful sometimes to have something on paper, whether it's draft legislation or summary recommendations, just as a starting point for our conversation. So just to summarize again, then we plan the opportunity, both the Friday morning meetings for people to participate, but also for the public to participate. I know that this is a timely topic and we want to make sure that we hear from everybody. So, all right. Well, thank you all very much. Linda, I was just about to close. You are going to let me go.
I always have to have the last say. Okay, so I haven't heard anything about the St. Mark's Committee.
I did, I did actually, I saw you drifting off there earlier tonight, so I did, I said, on the new committees, we need more time because we are trying to compile an entire committee. So look for a few months, a few months from now, okay? So, okay, just so you know.
Is that faster? I'm ready to go.
I know.
The town of Stern, I think, should be on the committee. Having reached out to Historical Society, there are lots of people that are involved in, you know, historic things, that they have an interest in that one. I mean, we can get, we sure find people together very easily.
Okay. I will just say that we've had committees in the past, and we've got some significant accomplishments with St. Mark's in the past. But we've also had, you know, a very dormant period, and what we're trying to do is to re-energize and maybe to look at the composition of the committee in such a way that we might have some expertise so that we can, you know, deal with the issue, which is the interior needs to be upgraded and all. deal with the issue, which is the interior needs to be upgraded, and also have some visioning associated with it, so it's not just about the historic nature of the property. I think that we've got that pretty well covered. I think it's how do we move forward with this property and put it to its best use?
Right.
Yeah.
And how about some of the other, like the Ag and Open Space Committee, Greenway, I haven't heard anything from them. Conservation Advisory Council, do you get a report? Do you have a report for them?
No, we heard the reports we have, that I believe the town website is now up to date with all of the minutes and reports from the committees. We put a good effort into making sure that nothing's lost there.
The public tends to rely on PANDA to get the information, so that would be helpful if you could be thorough in your presentation.
Well, I think we were, Linda, we didn't have a report from those committees that you talked about.
Okay, that's why I wanted to hear.
Yes, the Ag and Open Space Committee has not met. I know the Conservation Advisory Council had a very brief meeting, because many of them attended the Climate Action Film Festival, which was in Reinbeck on the same evening. So we do report on reports that we get.
Okay. Any new grants that you're considering?
Nothing.
Okay. Well, St. Marcus can use grant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Linda. If there are no other public comments at this time, I would like to thank you all for joining us and make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second.
If all in favor, all right, thank you very much.